Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 5th, 2013 Board of Selectmen. If you all stand, we'll pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, there are annual announcements. So we'll get right into the approval of minutes. The minutes of July 15th, the six o'clock meeting. I would, if you had the opportunity to look at them, I would entertain a motion to accept the...
Well, Mr. Vice Chair, I think we're gonna have to hold because we've only got two...
I was absent.
Yeah, we've only got two present for that.
Moving on. Reports of town officials? I'm sorry.
Yeah, same, same, that was the same date. So we'll hold those till the next...
I think we have, but the three of us were there. This one, John came in right before seven. So the six o'clock we can't do, but the seven we can. We'll make a motion to accept July 15th, 7:00 PM minutes.
Discussion? Roll?
Aye.
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 And I do have one more this evening. Visa for the payroll deductions dated July 29th, 2013 in the amount of $3,365.82.
I'll make a motion to pay this account for, let's see, 7/29/13.
Second.
Roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reporting from town officials, emergency management.
Have a pretty short report. There's not a lot going on, which is a good thing. The reimbursement paperwork from the February blizzard is still ongoing. FEMA decided to change some of the forms. So it's been quite a task deciphering through all the new forms. And the person from FEMA that was in the area to help us was recalled and reassigned somewhere else. So now we have somebody new. And so that's, that is ongoing. The antennas that were damaged in the EOC last year have all been repaired, replaced, and they're working good. The, with some of the leftover money I had in my budget, I was able to replace an old low-band radio, a single channel, with a new multi-channel radio. So all the radios are working very well. I received money totaling $4,500 through two different grants. So I was able to replace computers. I received those today, and they're all installed. And, let's see, the EOC had a new paint on all the walls. And so it looks very, very nice down there. The only issue we still have is the floor. We removed the rug, we removed the tiles. The floor is very spongy. And I really don't know what the answer is as far as getting it repaired. It will be very costly, I'm sure. But, so at some point, hopefully, somebody comes up with some idea or we can do something. But right now, it is very spongy. So, you know, we all just kind of walk really gingerly down there. And especially now with the closet, the file closet being emptied. All the files are in that room, so they can organize them. So it's adding a lot of extra, extra weight to the floor. So it's bowed a little more in a couple of spots because of all the weight. But there's no other place to put the files, so they can go through them. So that's where we stand with that.
What room are they using as the file?
The closet off of the EOC.
To the right?
To the right, yes.
Kind of long, odd shape?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we've been running a dehumidifier down there nonstop for the last six or eight weeks. And it's constantly dripping into the sink. So it's taking a lot of moisture out down there, which... So it does smell a little better down there, but it's, obviously, there's still some issues down there.
I think, I think the problem with that is, if I can attest, that used to be the old speech room. And I used to take speeches. I was probably six years old. And they ran a dehumidifier and a heater. And I remember the principal's office having them too. And I think it's just the makeup of down there. And I know we've run into that issue time and time again. I just think it's something that...
Oh, it is, it's old. And, you know, you have that moist dirt, you know, that's on top of the ledge and everything else. So there's, there's really no easy fix, that's for sure. But hopefully, we are gonna be getting a, putting in another dehumidifier down there in the file room closet. And we're gonna pipe that right into the sump pump that's behind the wall of the closet. So that'll take care of some of the moisture and then also run the other dehumidifier through the wall and also into the sump pump as well. So between two of them, that should dry it out fairly well, I would think. And just hope for the best.
Steve, in this interim period, while renovations are ongoing, are there any contingency plans for emergency management, communication, and the like?
As far as...
You don't have the mema room?
Well, if something happens, we have a, some sort of a bad storm comes up or... Luckily, so far, the tropical season has been very, very slow, which is good. But if something happens, we can always shift to the fire station. The radios that we have in the front office or the fire station basically would mimic what we have downstairs. So we could always operate over there if we needed to in the interim until the room opens up again.
When do you foresee, you might see the light at the end of that tunnel?
Wait, with all the files and stuff?
Yeah.
You have to ask someone that question?
Please do tell.
I don't know.
My goal is by Labor Day.
By Labor Day?
Yeah.
That's impressive.
Yeah, they're a big toaster line, yeah.
The kids seem to be working pretty hard. And they were working really hard down there today when we were installing the new computers and things like that. And so, they're getting it.
Is that it?
That's all I have, unless anyone else has any questions or anything. Things are going great. I have five volunteers. And I'm always looking, looking for a couple of more. But, but the group I have is a very good group. And that's all I have, it's pretty short.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Not a lot going on, so...
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All righty, good.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Hall. I'm the chairperson of the cultural council for this year. And I don't have a whole lot to tell you right now. I did bring some information to share with you. The financial part of it is the same information that went into the annual report for 2012. So I just wanted you to have it at hand if you had any questions about it. For the fiscal year 2013, we've had seven grants. We're still waiting for some of them to submit for reimbursement. But they have through January 15th, I believe, to get that. We won't know about our fiscal year 2014 budget until after the Massachusetts Cultural Council meets, their board meets on August 20th. So this year's budget was, our grant was $3,870, which was the same as fiscal year 2012. We're kind of hoping to nudge it upward. That would be really nice. Right now, I don't know if any of you saw it in the business office. Starting last Thursday, a community input survey became available. We have hard copies in the front office. We're just doing it for the month of August. This is a requirement from the state Massachusetts Cultural Council that we gather community input every three years. And in talking with my contact there, we recognize that sometimes it's hard to get a term out during the summer for, to get this input. So she recommended and worked with me on creating a survey that we're doing a bit of a grassroots effort on distribution. My council members are distributing it to friends and neighbors here in Millville only to get their input. I have extra copies for all of you. And we're gonna just hope that we can get a good cross-section of our community and use that input to really tweak our guidelines, really know that our policies are following what our community needs, not just maybe what's easiest for us or what the state recommends. Because we recognize that we have kind of a special situation here with being a small town. And we don't have a large school system like other towns are working with. So that's about all we have going on. Our season is really, for our council, is really September through December. So we're trying to get this input survey completed, our results analyzed, so that we can start kind of changing those guidelines before the grant applications start rolling in in the next two months. So that we do a good job with the money that we do have. Did you have any questions or anything for me?
No, I'm very familiar with the program.
I got you.
It's good, it's great, you know? I mean, my own children actually go to some of the library ones, so...
Yes.
And it's just, it's just nice to have.
Good, I'm glad you, they've been able to enjoy the programs there. Mesfa is another organization that does a lot of great programs that reach out to a lot of different families, both during school day and after school. So we try to make sure that we're helping fund activities that can reach a broader audience, helping out with the council of aging on things that are going on there. Middle school had a two-week poetry residency this spring that we helped fund, which was a great experience for the kids there. They got really into it. So hopefully, we'll have some new and interesting grants coming around, but passing to you.
Thank you.
Very good.
About to resign.
Thank you. First public phone? No one? Moving on. Am I missing something, John?
No.
No, okay.
I'm just listening.
Correspondence, what I had in my packet on, from the school district, VMR School District, letter dated July 11th. It was announced that the school committee appointed Dr. Perry Davis as interim supervisor. Formerly, Dr. Davis was in the Dover Sheraton Regional School System, then King Philip Regional School System. So he has regional school experience. And that appointment is for the fiscal year 2013, 2014. And that's to, is a replacement for Ms. Shaver-Hood, who was appointed superintendent of the Wareham School System, County Wareham School System. That letter also named Dr. Kirsten Epizito Balboni as a superintendent, as assistant superintendent. Dr. Balboni comes to VMRSD from Brookline School System, where she served as assistant superintendent of student services. And one other thing to mention, it just, Mr. Buckley indicated that the school committee continues to work on a replacement for Ms. Shaver-Hood. In the second piece of correspondence dated July 17th, we received a letter from the residents of 73 Thayer Street. The letter is regarding drainage issues affecting two bus stop locations in that area. And the residents are concerned for student safety as well as associated deterioration of the road surface and the conditions of the road in that area. In a memo to the Board of Selectmen, Mrs. Coffin, it was dated July 22nd. Mrs. Coffin wrote that she followed up with the Highway Surveyor, who advised that he was working on a problem and was awaiting a third estimate to correct the problem. Mr. Malali expects to get that work done by the fall. Any discussion or comment on that?
No.
In the third piece of correspondence that was in our packets, the board received a memorandum dated August 1st from the Executive Secretary. The memo pertains to elected town officials and the accountability of same. In the correspondence, Mrs. Coffin explains that after consultants would see the town administrators and managers in other towns, she prepared a draft document with its intent to assist town residents in addressing their issues with elected town officials and boards. Elected town officials are considered town employees and they're only accountable to people who elected them. And that includes the Board of Selectmen. In other words, the Board of Selectmen and the Executive Secretary do not have any jurisdiction or authority over the actions of elected officials. This evening, the Executive Secretary is asking the board to consider either rescinding a previous vote taken by the board to produce a handout, as was requested, or tweak and work with the attached draft document to continue the effort. I ask fellow board members if there are any questions or discussions?
I was the one who brought it up. I just, I just feel that we need to give them something. I don't need, I don't know if it needs to be at what length. I was thinking, you know, kind of, I'm thinking of the person at home who doesn't have the internet, the person at home who doesn't have outreach to the neighbors or individuals to get information. And then if they came in and they were given whether state agency phone numbers, you know, for what department, you know, this department at the state level deals with these departments at our local level, then they have a handout then to go and say, okay, this is my issue. I'm gonna call this. And it gets them to stop the ball rolling, to advocate for themselves, rather than coming in banging their heads against the wall, our employees banging their heads against the wall because of the elected officials. And I just think it gives them something. So, I mean, I'm more than willing to sit with Helen and work on it with her. I just don't want someone coming in with a complaint and leaving empty-handed. I just, you know, if it's just even a one-page, these are the groups, these are the state agencies, these are the things.
You can have guidelines and telephone numbers where to expedite a good...
Yeah, I mean, we can get online, and I can navigate the web if I know what I need. But some people don't have that luxury or that experience to do so. So just something so they could at least call one person to maybe go, oh, you're gonna need this department, you know, and allow them to advocate for themselves. I'm not saying we do it for them, but if we have a list of those state phone numbers under which department are usually relevant.
I have two comments. Number one, the piece that Mrs. Coffin prepared is a great civics lesson. And it's wordy and it's lengthy. And I feel that it could be worked with, it could become more succinct. And some of the verbiage could be, you could refer that to the source of that material. So my personal opinion would be, you know, to keep the effort going. And I agree with you, Jen, that, you know, reduce that frustration level with town residents and perhaps get town residents more involved in town government and in civics. The only, the only shot coming that I found in that piece was it didn't go to the extent of the elected officials can be recalled and how you go about recalling them. John?
Sounds good. Well, at least if they come in, they'll be able to, if they have a problem, they know who to go to, at least have a phone number without going to the front desk and saying, can't help you at this time, and have nothing for them. At least they have some kind of an avenue to pursue.
I would entertain a motion that we continue with the effort and work on it, as Mrs. Coffin indicated, tweak it.
I'll second her motion.
You need a motion, Pers.
Just move in the words.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we, if Jen wants to help work with Helen on that, to expedite some kind of a form for the public to have telephone numbers and people to call. I think that would be right.
A second.
Helen, did you have negative feedback, comeback?
I did, and I think I covered that in one of the paragraphs of my memo. The reason why we didn't, and I know that was Jen's initial intent, was just to make up a list with the state agencies. Because depending on what the issue is that the resident comes in with, possibly, there isn't a state agency that deals with it. So for instance, I would hate to put down, if you have an issue with the Board of Health, call the Department of Public Health, because that may not be the avenue for them. Same with the Highway Surveyor. I guess it would be the Department of Transportation, Mass Highway. They're not always gonna be able to help them. So I don't want to frustrate the resident even more by giving them a telephone number that's completely useless to them. So that's kind of how this all came about, is to give the resident the guidelines, how to do the research on their own, rather than try to give them a number that's not gonna help them.
Okay, further discussion? A vote on Mr. Lard's motion?
Aye.
Aye. In other correspondence, we received from the Mass County Transportation, an adjusted allotment for fiscal 2014. Now Chapter 90 allotment is $102,774.
Yes, this is a question. Is that up or down versus your buy?
It's up.
It's up.
Yeah, the whole state got like $15 million more. And I, offhand, I don't know the percentage increase for Millville, but profit, right across the board, more money available.
So we got $102,000 in Chapter 90? And we had some of the rest in that last one?
You're welcome. Out of District School Transportation?
I was gonna cover that under Business, Mr. President.
So I really don't have anything else for, in terms of correspondence. Appointment and resignations, none. Executive Secretary report.
I just wanted to let the board know that Mr. and Mrs. Frost did sign the three-year lease that the Board of Selectmen signed at their last meeting without any problems or concerns. And they have received the first installment check for the three-year lease payment. So that has been completed. If you recall, we have been receiving complaints with respect to 37 Central Street, the former Mug Pub building. Notification and order has been sent out today via certified mail by the building inspector to the owners of the property. It had been my hope to have that on the board's agenda for this evening, but because the letter just went out, we're a little bit delayed. But now that notification and order has gone out to the owners, if they either refuse or neglect or don't take any action, I will be recommending to this board at your next meeting on the 19th to order the building secured. And the cost for that would then be placed as a lien on that property. So if we see nothing happen over the next two weeks, we will add that as an agenda item for the 19th. For 175 Central Street, we also received some complaints of the earth removal. We sent the earth removal agent, as well as the Conservation Commission, on-site inspections. The Conservation Commission has informed that they issued a no-work-in-the-buffer-zone order. I have not received anything in writing back from the earth removal agent. I additionally contacted National Grid and explained that they were working very close to the power lines. And National Grid did issue a cease and desist. Chief Landry has advised that he continues to monitor the site, and there's been no, no work at this point. So we're still keeping an eye on that. My understanding from the Conservation Commission is in their meeting with the property owner, he does continue to state that it is for agricultural purposes. And if it is for agricultural purposes, and I think he mentioned something about blueberry trees and apple trees, that is exempt, and that's Mass general law. So there'd be nothing the town could do about that. Mr. Felicio, who is a resident of the town and owns the parcel of land next to the fire station on the corner of Lincoln and 122, did come in to visit me a week or two ago and asked if the town would be interested again in purchasing that parcel of land and/or trading with him, if you will, for another town-owned piece of land. And he did specifically mention one that he has his eye on. I happen to know for a fact that this particular piece of land is the same one that was auctioned last year. And also happens to be one that I believe the chief of police and fire has, may have his eye on for a future building. But I did want to ask the board how they would like me to respond to Mr. Felicio's request.
Yeah, what's his number on selling?
I believe it was 120 last time we checked.
120?
For the corner lot. And the board had voted at that time against it.
Yeah, tell them good luck with 120. Tell them we'll give them $10,000.
I think it's something that the board as a whole, all five members, should have a discussion with. I know I have my personal feelings right now, but I'd like to hear everybody's point of view and have the full board...
That's not a buildable lot. I would like to hear more, you know, what town's plans are going forward. We know that that lot is not, the car center, main in Lincoln, is not very conducive for fire operations and getting trucks in and out. So what is, what is the town gonna do long-term? I think it would be a hasty decision to decide on it now. We don't need it. We don't need it, and we know for a fact it is not a buildable lot.
It's actually two lots, two small lots.
Wow. Are you sure it's two small lots?
It's where the old store was, and then the back parking lot. The back parking lot used to be...
It may actually be three lots, maybe.
Well, it can't be very big lots, I mean, you're talking...
No, because you see the store, the gas station, and then the old blacksmith shop, I believe, was...
Yeah, the parking lot.
Was the one behind us.
You have the two parking lots, and then the...
You have the two parking lots and then the location of the property.
So at one time, it was three lots there. But they are, they are, each one is, is small.
I personally don't think the Board wants to even entertain that at this time.
The only thing I would like to request, listen to Jennifer, is if there's any interest on the Board's Selectmen to entertain that, I'd like to know, because we're putting a lot of effort into designing a new building on the lot that I believe is extremely valuable to this town, and we would be extremely foolish to trade lots. And in my, my own opinion, particularly a lot on the corner, is of no value to the Fire Department whatsoever. Certainly not built, but that's why it is not sold. The lot on Vane Street is extremely valuable to this town, not only at the Fire Department in the future, or some of the other opportunities we may have to use it. It sits where you're in a position where it faces Chestnut Hill and Main Street. So it's a valuable piece of land that we're going to need for the future growth of this town, especially because of where it's located. To entertain any thought of trading that parcel, or even selling it for a small amount of money, we might be absolutely foolish. We have so many uses for that piece of parcel, not only from the fire aspect, but from the highway aspect as well. And as I say, because we've acquired a lot of equipment over the last two years, and we need a place to have this inventory stored. We don't have it currently. And the proof is the theft of the plow from the salt shed. Chief.
I think.
It's, in my opinion, it's for discussion for another day with all five members. I don't think selling that property is going to do anything for this town. And to acquire a piece on the corner that the Fire Department has no need of, is absolutely foolish. To me, it's more a self-serving need to give somebody a Cadillac and take a lend and not trade. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't add up.
Well, I, I think, the, the reason why I said we need all five Board members, because I think at our last meeting was the first time I heard that there was plans for that other lot. Like, I've never heard otherwise. So if there are people involved in town, I know the planner was here, and he showed us all the parcels. And I don't recall during that meeting, there was any parcel in town that somebody said, and we said, are we going to have all the Boards back to talk about all the parcels? What are we going to do? What is the direction of the town? And now, then, last time we heard that there's, you know, no offense, I, I just say this is the information I have, that it was the first time I heard that there was a department working on a parcel in town. And it was the first time I heard it. So what I'm saying, to have the full Board here, and any of those people who are interested or have ideas for the town, to come to that meeting to have that discussion. I'm not saying I'm entertaining this, but I'm saying I think there needs to be a comprehensive talk between departments who may have a vision for something in town, to come together and talk about them, rather than hearing about them.
That's exactly what this is, the vision for Highway and Police and Fire. And it's really predicated on the fact that we're paying now $23,000 to lease a building to keep two fire trucks in, which is absolutely foolish. So why are we going to give away $23,000 every lease period, when we can have our own facility in a perfect location? So to trade it for that piece of property would be absolutely foolish.
Joe, you've already advocated once before that he was interested in that piece of property, and we weren't interested.
That might have been prior to, when it went auctioned, right?
Before.
Yeah. I don't think I was on the Board at that time.
No, you're not. But you brought up once before.
But I'm just saying, I know we had, we had the meeting with Mr. Layden, and he went through all of the parcels, you know, the landlocked ones, the ones here, this one, that one. And I re, and I remember specifically saying, are we going to come back and have our departments and really lay out a vision on which ones are we going to sell, which ones do we keep, which ones, you know, what can we do with them? So I, and that's the conversation I want to have. I'm not, like, I'm, I'm not saying this is.
I understand.
Something I'm entertaining. I just think the conversation needs to include everybody with viable interest.
I think you used the right word, vision, for this town to move forward. That is the great lot, which is easy to identify, because there's really no other lot in town that has that exposure on Main Street and Chestnut Hill, and not a commercial district by any stretch of the means, but it's certainly less intrusive if we tried to build something on Upper Chestnut Hill, where there's land.
Yeah.
The, the perfect spot would be on Main Street. It accommodates everyone's needs from municipal side of government. Otherwise, where are we going to go in the future if we give away that parcel of land? There's nowhere else. That I've seen, I've seen that same list, and there's nowhere else, in my opinion, that we could locate, possibly Police, Highway, and Fire at the same time. And that is the perfect spot for it. It simply has great access to, you know, one side of town versus the other side. And the most important part, on the fire-related side, and I'll give this presentation in the future, but the current Fire Department, the bottom line is, it's in a very poor location. It worked many years ago, simply doesn't work today. Modern fire stations, you drive in, you drive out. You no longer back into them. And we're forced to stop traffic to back in and out of that fire station. It's in a poor location. So to try to develop the other lot, would be absolutely foolish to do that. It's just, it doesn't make sense. So as far as the Fire Department's concerned, you know, we spent a lot of time in edging last year to build our own parking lot, as you know, directly behind the fire station. And that works well for us. We can park 15 cars, 12 to 15 vehicles, with no issue. So the need, we're no longer dependent on the lot, which by the way, was roped off, as you know, we tried to use it. So there was no cooperation there whatsoever. Someone woke up one morning, and there were brick barricades with fishing rope surrounding that property. So we haven't used that property in over a year. So we don't need it, and we don't miss it. So I think, when we address this, this plan in the future, I will have a plan for the Fire and Highway Department at the same time, to utilize that piece of property. And I think the future growth of this town, we should really keep it before we give it away.
My, my comment would be, with the exception of this lot, I still think it would be appropriate to revisit tho, those parcels with the town planner. And have, have another meeting on that subject only.
Exactly. I had, I had obtained that list from the clerk myself, and that's, that's why I'm really keen on this particular lot, it's the one, one that really meets our needs for the future growth of what we're going through. There's really nowhere else to go. It's a great lot, because of the location, so you hate to give that away, but for no reason.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Helen?
Could the Board like me to, to table this to a particular meeting date, when the, when the Chief is presenting for his department, or would you like to schedule something else with the planning board?
No, but I, I think we'll reschedule to meet with the Chief, first off. We'll follow that up at some other time.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'd like to have that, just an open meeting discussion for anybody to come in and look at the parcels.
Coffee with the Selectmen in September.
September 14th, and we're inviting the planner. Is that the topic you want to take?
That could be one of the many.
It's two hours long, Joe. On September 14th, from, I just put it in my calendar.
Nine to 11.
Thank you. From nine to 11 at the Chestnut Hill Community Center, the Board of Selectmen will be having a coffee with the planner and any town resident or boards or committees. It's just a, just a table discussion, a roundtable discussion that Mr. Repose proposed. Any topics that kind of come up that we need to address, here ideas, here positions, nothing set in stone. It's a Saturday morning from nine to 11, and you're bringing the coffee. Got it.
Of course there's going to be coffee, you're there.
Yeah. So yeah, it's, what's it called, like, coffee, coffee with the Selectmen? Coffee with the Selectmen, so.
As Mr. Furno mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we've been working for about three weeks now on the file storage room in the basement. All the files have been reviewed per the State's destruction schedule. We've moved all the files out of the file room. We've separated them. I'd say over 50% of the files are eligible for destruction, so we have made a request to the State. We have a mobile shredder scheduled for next Tuesday. Additionally, you've probably seen the dumpster parked outside for items that don't have to be shredded. We're prepared to throw away, and we've advised all of the town departments that now would be a good time to purge, whether it's old equipment or broken chairs, or whatever they have in their offices. They can feel free to use the dumpster. The carpeting has been torn up, was just torn up today in the file room. So the next step is going to be working to determine what we're going to do with the floor. It was a concrete floor, unfortunately, that they put tiles on, so there's some residue of tiles on the concrete floor, but it's very moisture-riddled, so. I've placed a bunch of phone calls to concrete contractors similar to those that we used for the elevator lobby, to see if they could come in and give me an estimate on putting down an epoxy or sealing that floor. So that's the next step. As Steve mentioned, we've gotten the two dehumidifiers, the two dehumidifiers are running. But Steve and his crew is going to help install those so that they do drain directly into the sump pump.
What, what is the capacity?
We've got a 70 and a 40.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
That's pretty good.
So as I mentioned, I'm hopeful that we will be able to finish the project by Labor Day. And I know Steve is anxious for that, just in case we have a hurricane. But I do want to thank Steve and his, his staff for all their help. It's a great help. And I do also want to thank one particular young man, Cameron Valencourt, who lives in town, who volunteered his services this summer for several weeks. And came in and did all kinds of work throughout town. He washed windows and worked out in the file room.
Cameron was a great asset and a great help towards this.
He really was. He was a great kid. He's going to be attending VBT in the fall, and we just wanted to extend our thanks to him. It was a pleasure having him.
Send him a letter?
Sure.
Thank you, and have this likely signed.
Will do.
Thank you.
So what I did, just for your information, because I know most of you are probably scared to go down there, but Mr. Repose had joined me down there today. This is just a sample of what we're, the files, the condition of the files. And this is one of the, the more extreme cases. But you can see, there's, there's a mold problem, there's a moisture problem, so this, this is what we're dealing with.
And that's a record that you need to keep.
This is a permanent record, yeah. And the majority of what, what's down there, they're permanent. They're the cash books, the commitments. They're all permanent. And, you know, years ago, they weren't in sturdy binders like we have them now, so they're, they're not standing well at the time. I just want to let the Board know that, as you know, when you appoint officials in June each fiscal year, the Board has a policy that those officials come in within 30 days to receive their oath of office and be sworn in. For the past several years, we've been very lenient with that policy, but now that we've got some additional staffing and a new data entry system, working with the Assistant Town Clerk, we're getting to the point where we are prepared now to really buckle down. So letters will be going out next week to those who have not come in to be sworn in, advising them that if they don't, their position is going to be considered vacant. So should you get calls from residents screaming that they, they just got a letter in the mail, that's, that's what it is about. The town clerk asked me to bring to your attention this mailer that she's going to be mailing out. This was an idea that we, we thought would be helpful. It gives some of the upcoming and important dates, noteworthy dates in town, and it's going to be sent to all residents. I have offered to pay the postage for this because the town clerk does not have sufficient funds in her budget. But my question to the Board is, it's going to be about $250 to send a mailer like this out, with, including the paper and the postage. So my question to the Board is, if you, would you support something like this once a year, twice a year? What your thoughts are, and how you'd like to see this proceed?
Well, what I can see here, the way you have it formatted, I think once a year would be substantial. Then people can say that they did not, they weren't told that they didn't have any, like, some people don't have cable, so they have no way of knowing that when we have certain events or certain things going on. So basically, the way this thing is laid out, just so much laid out, it basically goes over quite a bit from August 19th all the way to the special town meeting in, in May of 2014. So I think this would be a very nice to put out. It also gives you a website, a telephone number, so I think this is all good, very well done.
So you'd support once a year, you think it's sufficient?
I think it takes you from September to, to May, our lows of the summer. I'd like to see something in there, you know, November slash December, special town meet, special town meeting, you know.
She said, the town clerk did ask me, but we haven't set the date yet.
I know we don't set it, but if people see that it's, it's usually held around November slash December, you know, check the website for actual date.
And the intent.
Well, it has a website on it, Jack.
Yeah, but it doesn't have the, um, special town meeting of the fall, and that's the one that we don't have enough to meet quorum sometimes. That's where we're counting up to 40.
We'll put it there, so.
Well, I think, I mean, logistically, it, it can be modified.
Why don't we see what the reaction on this is going to be, the acceptance of it?
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we could, you know, reevaluate later on.
Okay. One of the Board members mentioned that they've got a list of bullet items that they'd like to speak with the Highway Surveyor about. And it was suggested, perhaps, setting up a meeting with the Highway Surveyor to go over some of the outstanding items. Is the Board interested as a whole in scheduling a workshop with Mr. Malali, or?
I have some, some issues to discuss with Mr. Malali.
The only problem is, we can discuss it with him, but we can't tell him basically anything.
I know, but the thing is, we need to understand what's going to happen when, or get, get a definition on, you know, where we stand on certain projects.
I would like to think that any elected official would be willing to come in and talk to us if there's concerns. I've talked to Mr. Malali myself and said, I got this email, I got this letter. Have you followed up? Can, I, I call them, I email them and say, you know, I've seen this, or I heard this, can you give me more information? I received a complaint last winter for somebody on Summit. I called personally. I didn't, you know, I just called and said, oh, by the way, they missed this, it was checked out, it was cleared up. I didn't make a big deal of it, but I think if there's bullets, and he's willing to come in and sit and talk, I mean, we, our school committee comes in, our, I'm trying, our town clerk comes in. We have, you, you need to develop and foster that, that, that way of communicating effectively and not defensively. And I think that's been a problem with some Boards. And I, I'd rather set the tone as, we, we're all here together, and that, you know, by God, we're going to get it done, and having that calm discussion. I don't think it's something that we need to, I like cable, but I think sometimes an open meeting for those who want to come is more productive than when you have it on cable. Where people can say what they feel, it's not, we're not closing it off, but I think it's more productive and people don't feel defensive. So I wouldn't have a problem. I, I would have, I.
Non-cable meeting?
Yeah, just a workshop. Doesn't have to be televised on an off week and.
That's, in, in my case, I think that, that's, that's a problem because town residents are not hearing the kinds of things that, you know, they ask me. Let them get it directly from the Highway Surveyor.
Just a difference of opinion.
My phone's ringing too much now.
Just a difference of opinion, that's all. So, I mean, if there's not a quorum, then it's not an open meeting. Whereas if, you know, if it's an open meeting, then, I mean, it's really a discussion. It's for any of our elected officials that, you know, we have concerns about. So I guess it's just philosophy and the manner in which you want to do it.
You know, I, I don't envision this as being, putting someone on the carpet. It's, it's just, you know, an exchange of information and understanding where the priorities are. It's just, you know, an exchange of information and understanding where the priorities are and adjusting expectations accordingly.
We have the same goal, we just have a different path.
So what are we going to do? Someone want to make a motion?
Are you the member with a bullet list, may I ask? Now I've got you on cable, guys.
I confess that I keep a list at home. Whenever I get an inquiry, achieve an inquiry or the like, I put it down.
I don't have a problem meeting with you and the highway surveyor and discussing issues. If the whole board wants to do it, then it becomes, you know, whatever format, but.
Should we table the question until the next meeting when we have?
I would request that we just put this discussion on selectmen's forum for the next meeting.
And the last item in your packets are actually on the table this evening. I prepared an informative memo to you regarding the Veterans Services Department. I'm not sure if you've had the opportunity or time to read through that yet, but my question was whether you wanted to set up a meeting with the current Veterans Agent to discuss some of the items or if you want to table that until the next meeting to, so you can digest what have given you.
And he just received, this was just mailed?
Today.
So he hasn't seen it?
This is not even in his mailbox yet. I just printed this late this afternoon, so.
They're out of table.
Yeah. He may have some definite opinions.
Would you like to invite Mr. Barber in for the nineteenth, or do you want to just discuss it as a board?
Person I would like to invite him in.
Rudy, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Oh, business? Nothing. New business?
Yeah, just the out-of-district transportation. And this is for the Millville students who will be attending Tri-County and Franklin and Norfolk Aggie and Walpole. As you know, the town of Millville does need to pay for this transportation as well as the tuition. Per mass procurement laws, we do need to go out to bid each year. We only received one bid from Telstone, which is the company that normally comes in as the low bidder anyway. However, as you'll see on the front page, he did give us a little bit of a different option. And we've been asking for this the past couple of years because some of our students are athletes or are involved in other activities. Often times, they only take advantage of one trip per day. Perhaps they go in on the bus in the morning, but a parent picks them up in the afternoon and we were still paying for a full day. So he does give us a per-trip cost as well as a daily cost. But I haven't had the opportunity to contact each of the parents to determine which of these options is going to be best for the town based on how their students will be using the bus situation. So my recommendation to the board, as you'll see on my memorandum, is to award the bus transportation pursuant to the quotes received and for the options deemed by the executive secretary to be the better option for the town. This will enable me to make a few phone calls this week and speak with the parents and determine how their kids are going to be using the buses and determine which of these options would be better for us to go with.
I would entertain a motion to award the out-of-district school bus transportation for the town of Millville, to Telstone and Sons for the year 2013 to 2014, school year pursuant to the quotes received and for the option deemed by the executive secretary to be the better option for the town.
I'll second that motion.
You have to.
You have to make that motion.
He can't make motions.
I don't think he can.
So lost.
I make a motion now, we give Telstone the bus transportation services for the year 2013 to 2014 as red and with the executive secretary making the options after she makes some evaluations on pickup and drop off.
A second?
Discussion?
Yes. All right, so on option two, as I'm reading it, Tri-County, we have two students and they're opting to transport from their residence. Whereas with Norfolk Aggie, there's two options of their residence for a designated stop.
Because we're in with Blackstone, that's why he can give us a reduced rate on the Aggie?
But the Tri-County there isn't, so they, okay, all right.
I'm not sure if that's because Blackstone doesn't have any kids going to Tri-County. I don't know the reasoning for that, but he only gives us the option to go in with Blackstone on the Norfolk Aggie.
It still wouldn't be cheaper if we had a bus stop downtown where they didn't have to drive around town?
Yes, we asked that question last year.
No, I just want to be sure. Okay, because, I mean, definitely the combined bus stop is a relatively big cost savings, if we can do that. Okay.
What I hadn't realized is that for Norfolk Aggie, it's transport for the students in their homes. Okay, on the question, Row?
Well, no, I mean, I'm just looking, the seventy-five dollars cost saving over a hundred and eighty days is thirteen thousand dollars. So, I mean, if we can, I truly advocate for option two on the Aggie, regardless, regardless of family situations.
No, we would likely go with option two.
No offense, but we don't have a library, our seniors' sensors on bare bones. I'm not picking a kid up at their house when they can come downtown.
Whether we'll go with a daily cost or a per-trip cost.
The high schoolers, okay, thank you.
Motion's been defeated?
Nope, motion made in second, we have to move.
Okay, Row.
Aye.
That's it for new business, members forum. Jerry, you've been very patient.
Yes.
This is the time that I'm going to bring up the approval to the board of policy of fuel efficiency and fuel-efficient vehicle purchase and a plan. Just for everyone's information is that the Green Energy Committee is in the process of pursuing green community status. And in that, there are five criteria that the town must meet. But with that office of the town, first of all, there's a grant involved. It equates to Millville like for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's, the good thing that the town has done is that two town meetings ago, the town adopted a stretch code and an expedited permitting for solar and green energy development. Right now, we're working on, the committee's working on preparing to do an energy plan. Before we make the submission, and the town, Board of Selectmen specifically, has to address the developing, address a fuel-efficient vehicle policy and fuel-efficient vehicle plan. And that information is attached in your packet. First one's the easy one, it's alerted to Massachusetts Department of Energy, Green Communities Division in Boston. And all it says is that in a public board of selectmen meeting held on, I use this date, August fifth, 2013, Board of Selectmen voted to adopt the attached fuel efficiency policy. And that policy is attached. And it's applicable to all divisions or departments in the town of Millville, with the exception of the regional schools. Fortunately, well, in this case, as far as Millville goes, I don't, we determined that there wasn't a vehicle assigned to Millville's school operation. So it's basically all town vehicles. Heavy-duty equipment, graded in eighty-five hundred gross weight, classified heavy duty. So they're exempt from the policy. The only non-exempt vehicle that the town has is the animal control officer's vehicle. And we have to, the town will submit with its application an inventory of the town vehicles. And at the present time, Chief Landry was good enough to work with me to get all the titles and Mrs. Coffin, the titles on those vehicles so we can complete that vehicle inventory. In total, there'll be thirteen vehicles. So what I'm doing is asking the board to adopt the fuel-efficient vehicle policy and a vehicle replacement plan.
Can I make more comments, Joe?
Sure, man. The only thing I wanted the board to know as well is that, Jerry, three hundred and forty-seven Grove Street, Green Energy Committee, the only other thing I wanted them to know was that the requirement breaks out to exempt the non-exempt. So when you look at your fire engines and things that are emergency vehicles, those are all exempt. Okay, so they're not going to be part of it. The thirteen that Joe mentions here, there's only one. That's what it comes down to. And frankly, the state government within the next year is going to require this anyways. So we're actually trying to get ahead of this as part and parcel of the whole energy, green energy submission. And that submission is required to be performed and completed by the end of October. So we have till that date to get that done. Joe was kind enough to go and to put this on the agenda ASAP so we could get this portion of it put to bed as we work on the five criteria. And this is criteria four, just to get this completed. So that was the reason for the urgency on it. We like to get that put to bed and then work on the next ones.
I might mention too, that over a hundred cities and towns in the Commonwealth have adopted these policies.
Correct. The actual grant has been sized by the state for us. If we were to be able to get it, which we believe we can, it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which would be what the grant would be. There's an additional ten thousand dollars which is already going to be given to us because of the action by the folks in the town two town meetings ago, when they did the stretch code. Just by virtue of doing that, it's an honor that ten thousand dollars coming to the town for that. So we've got a potential of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, seed money if you must, to get things started, to be able to look at various ways that could help the chief and help out the fire department, help out the seniors. And it's really something I think that we need to put our energy to and we need to make this happen now. So that's why the sense of urgency on it.
And this I can't emphasize enough, the town's largest valued asset is the elementary school. And that has the greatest potential for efficiency and cost reduction. Although we're waiting on the plans, but if, you know, the boiler's twenty-five years old. I don't know how old this boiler is, but if they don't make the eighty-five percent efficiency, we have an opportunity to replace them.
That's what I was going to ask. First of all, just for the people at home, how many people are on your committee?
There's five people.
Five of you, okay. I knew some of you. And now of this grant, the one forty, exactly what are the items in which we can purchase? How can this be utilized? I mean, we accept this, but the hundred and forty isn't for purchasing just vehicles. Can we use it for boilers? Can we use it for, what's the scope of the grant?
The thing is, when all the surveys are completed, the committee will have to put a plan together to submit with it. And if it's a boiler replacement, whatever it is, that's where it'll be applied to that. Energy reduction, and in five years, the goal is to affect a reduction in energy use or carbon twenty percent.
So really, the plan will dictate that. And that's why these reports coming back from National Grid, Northern Energy, those type of folks that have come in, for instance, when they looked at a certain part of the building, the wall was not completed to the ceiling. So therefore, the heat was just evaporating through the top of the ceiling going over. It wasn't really consistent in one area. They said, geez, so they would come up with recommendations on all kinds of things. In this building, we've had them go to all buildings, town hall buildings. They have done a report on things. They will give us all the indication as to what it is that would need to be done. And that's what the grant would then be used against, would be some of those actionable things. They also, as Joe said, went to the elementary school where, I see it's still up there, Joe. Seventy-five percent of all the BTUs that are used on an annual basis here in town is used in the elementary school. So if we could change the lights up there, which I think we've done before, but they've got new lights now. If they can put in things that would be laser sensors that would all of a sudden knock down the lights when no one's using them, so they're not lit up half the night, various other things. Even non-water toilets, for instance. They have those now that they don't use water anymore, can save a considerable amount of energy. So it's these type of things that will be highlighted by Northern Energy, National Grid, and they will come to us. We would then take and we can pick and choose as to which ones we think are the most critical. For instance, if we look here, we thought that the boiler downstairs, that this wasn't it, you were freezing all winter long, and that we thought that would be nice and try to get you at least some heat. That might be the most critical element that we would have to look at. So we're going to prioritize those things once we get this report back, which we're patiently waiting on.
And the grant doesn't limit the items?
No.
Like as far as, like, it has to have a certain life or it has to do a certain job? It just has to reduce?
Anything it has to do, it has to, in aggregate, has to bring it down by twenty percent. So here, you have to go back, do a footprint backwards three years. And that's what all of these reports are for. Thank you for your help, by the way. And then we get a baseline.
Okay.
And then we demonstrate from that baseline that we're actually on a slope. We have to prove that we can get to that slope of twenty percent down over five years.
Five years.
Actionable things that we're talking about here. For instance, if we go get another animal vehicle, in that particular case, we would want to get something that, and now we've agreed, if we do agree to do it tonight, we have to agree that it has to be more energy efficient than whatever the baseline is we have now. So if it's only getting eighteen miles a gallon, we don't want to get one that has forty. That helps to put us into that twenty percent range. That's the idea behind it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. I would entertain a motion with the select board adopt the fuel-efficient policy in the vehicle.
Joe, you said that these came, this template, this plan, came from a hundred other communities?
Well, basically, this is what the DOE recommend.
Is this their template and then you adjusted it for Millville?
Yeah, I adjusted it for Millville. This was actually taken basically from the town of Pelham.
Yeah. We look for ones that were same size scope, type of demographics, as well as the type of government so that we could get something matched up. That's basically what we're looking for.
And this was already accepted by the state when Pelham put theirs in? Is this something that needs to go through our legal counsel?
Well, once, it would be.
I mean, how tired are we?
Yes.
It should be, okay.
The question is, you know, we need to do this PDQ because that October deadline comes out pretty quick. came down pretty quick.
We have some plans for some of those things that have been previously required, like Drachman and...
Drachman and Lufitz.
Yes, thank you. They are the, we're going to have to go, another, because it's five criteria, another criterion involves some information that they went back, signed by, signed by the court concerning votes that were taken on the stretch code and things like that. So there is legal counsel involvement that is there saying, okay, state city, you have to have this certified, they say it would be certified. So we are part of this, and it's not, we're not unilaterally doing this.
Okay.
Okay, we are working with them once, if there are things that are required by the state.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I will move that the Board of Selectmen accept the fuel-efficient vehicle policy as presented by the Green Energy Committee.
One second. Roe?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Final public forum. Just a couple of things. The public walkway between Hope Street and Prospect Street, I was speaking to Helen last week, continues to be an issue. We did replace the steel bollards with plastic ones. Those have both been damaged, and they're both down. So we really have to look for an answer if we're going to address that particular problem with a more permanent solution, which in my opinion probably be two gates. That way, they can't be removed, they can't be stolen, and we need a key to open the gate and to close the gate. We've tried steel bollards, which were very expensive, that didn't work. We tried the plastic bollards, which would fall and come back up. That worked for a period of time, someone's run over them, and they're both damaged, and they're in my truck.
Well, the steel bollards were, they were just stolen.
They were just stolen, but the design was flawed because of reasons.
Well, those were key removable.
Right, but they were, it was a key removable, yet the nuts could, you lifted them off. So, but the bottom line is, the property, once again, is for sale. So I was really thinking about alternatives, and I have a couple. One would be a gate on each side, similar to what we have at the school, which will lock and open and close the gate. Second possibility would be to remove the asphalt that was placed there before the new owner takes over, so there's no misunderstanding as to what's going on there. And the third option is to, I guess, do nothing and live with the situation that we have. Now, I know we spent a lot of time and money addressing this particular issue, but it seems to be a problem every time we try something new. So I think the gates, in my opinion, is the best alternative. Certainly, if you want to eliminate it altogether, would be remove the asphalt, bring back the grass, and...
Could you drive a fire truck over it?
We could. If we, we could. The gates, the bottom line, if you have a bollard or not, you have to use a key on the old steel ones, and we had four of those, so we would have to unlock four different...
But it's pedestrian, correct?
It's pedestrian, but it's wide enough for a vehicle. And that, that's what happened when the gentleman, the previous owner paved it, he paved it wide enough to travel from Hope to Prospect and back the other way. So if you look at it, it looks like a driveway, and it is a driveway.
Well, they changed the address. It was never Hope Street.
Okay.
It was Prospect Street at the front, when they, I think Mr. Rainville remodeled it, they closed up the front door.
Okay.
And then they used the back door. I grew up there as a kid, but it was never Prospect Street. I don't even know how they changed it, I mean, Hope Street, I don't know how they changed it from...
That's the assessment's off.
But the only...
I mean, but they had to have done it through their deed and all that good stuff, too.
Now, I did speak to the current owner a couple of weeks ago, and he just recently purchased the house not that long ago. I'm not sure he was really aware of what was taking place there. So the bottom line is the house is for sale again, there's a for-sale sign in front of the house. I think whatever action we take now should be more of a permanent action, so there's no misunderstanding, whoever purchases that home realizes that it's not a driveway. So...
But what legal right do we have removing the asphalt?
That's something we'd have to speak to the attorney about.
Because we didn't put it in.
That wasn't town-approved.
Right, it wasn't town-approved, it was done. I think it was done by the dead of the night, maybe, when no one really was paying...
Right, he also didn't, the resident at the time, not the current owner, didn't go to conservation either, and I believe he encroached on the wetlands a little bit.
Exactly, so that was done, use the word legally, per se.
Well, they built it up.
We didn't know what was going on, no one really paid attention to it, we wake up and there's a driveway. So maybe the gates would be the best alternative.
I just hate to see the neighborhood with those steel gates. Do you know what I mean? They look industrial, it's...
Right. We could paint them, please in color.
I mean, I don't know if there's alternatives to it.
I don't know the answer, because we've invested a lot of money.
I know that's not the main thing, but for the people who live there and walk there, it just, you know, I mean, I understand you want to make it clear that these are permanent gates, so whoever purchases it says, what's the deal with that?
I just don't want, you know, throwing away money, town's money and town resources with this continued problem.
No, I agree.
With the steel bollards, it was an expense, these plastic ones were an expense. I'm there all the time, my guys are there, highway's there, for what reason?
You know, will the gates still keep it up, pedestrian walkway?
Well, would we? I was there looking at it, I think with Joe, and we would leave maybe three feet, so someone could have enough room to walk by the gate, but the gate would remain closed unless we needed for emergency purpose, police or fire. And that's my only suggestion that we have, other than removing the asphalt or giving up, which we don't want to do, because we've had so much time and effort in this project. But like I said, now it's time to act because it is for sale.
We need to put the gates back up. We spent too much time, wire fees, everything.
Exactly, we spent a lot of time. Helen had instructed me to go there and look at one bollard that was missing, and come to find out, the other one was knocked down as well. So that didn't work. So now, before it escalates with a new owner, we should really address it now.
Do you have the fence, the gate, you said?
We could, we certainly purchase a gate. It's, it'd be a smaller gate, it wouldn't be something so intrusive where it would be, you know, it wouldn't be eye-peeeling, I think it would work, but it would be a permanent fixture that someone's not going to steal, and they can't drive through it. Or we go back to install the bollards, and every couple of weeks, I'm there finding a new one, or finding one that's damaged. So I know we spoke about this last year and the year before, so that's what we're up to.
And I'm sure the real estate agent's not giving the whole story yet.
Exactly.
So that their lives...
I was actually going to call the real estate agent and let them know what they have there, whether or not they're properly advertising it as a public walkway, and the town does have the right to place a fence or barricades there. But regardless of what we do, it has to be more of a permanent solution to what we've done.
Why don't we, first of all, determine what a gate's going to cost to install?
Could no Smithfield fence or someone like them come up with a solution that might look nice?
Would they, would they...
Do you know what I mean? I'm not a designer, but I'm thinking like, you know, those white plastic, and then just have them come across and kind of lock down with still a walking path, but look a little more homey?
No plastic, generally.
No, no plastic.
Or something to that.
It actually looks like a, actually looks like a flag, it's a steel post or column with a flag shape, and with a little chain that holds it in place, similar to what we have at the school, and it's really not an eyesore, and we could paint it black.
It's because you don't look next to it. I don't look next to it either, but I'm trying to think of the, you know, I mean, the neighborhood and...
Well, I think, when you speak about that, I think the four steel bollards we had at one time...
No, I thought that was kind of...
Exactly. So if that's to the extreme, this is certainly less than that.
Yeah, I look at those gates every day.
So, exactly.
Those gates were there when we moved in.
And you understand, and these would be half that size. So it's just, I was speaking to Helen about it, if you want to address it, just to let you know, that's a problem that we have. So that, the other problem that we have, the pump located inside the pump station for the fire hydrant system is not working today, hasn't been working over the weekend. We believe, Selectman Laura was there today looking at it with Captain Inferno and myself, we think it may be the pump, we're not sure, we need other company to look at tomorrow. If it is the pump, I have no idea what it's going to cost to fix, I would think it's thousands of dollars. I don't think it's hundreds of dollars, I think it's thousands of dollars, but we won't know till tomorrow.
You can't get replacement parts for that?
I don't know.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, we don't.
We have them, I have them in some of my buildings, that type and style, and I had one rebuilt last year from an outfit, so it is rebuildable, but we're not going to say it's the pump at this time, because we need maybe a second or third opinion.
How old is that pump?
Sixty, forty to sixty years old. It's old.
Yeah, I don't remember ever, I never in my lifetime remember hearing it was replaced.
And the only concern I have, the only concern I have is if we receive an outrageous quote to fix it, while we should really evaluate either replacing or repairing as two different options, because if we get a foolish quote to repair it, you're repairing a 60-year-old piece of equipment with an engine that's probably, I don't know how old the engine is, it's probably, from what I understand, 20, 30 years old.
It's like an old Mercury Carmen engine.
Yeah, you don't want to throw away good money at something. So we'll have an update, I'll give Helen the update on that tomorrow, as soon as we find out. And the last thing, we have a new server being installed in the police department, I believe on Friday. So if anyone's looking for a police report, we probably cannot generate it, because the entire server is being replaced, and we're going to be shutting down, the records will probably five to six hours. So that server was purchased using the fire assistance grant for at least about $8,000.
Who's going to be doing the work?
It's going to be, he's doing the work day, so that's going to be a server for both the fire department and the police department.
Who's the contractor?
Will Band. So they get the contract, and they supply all the equipment, so it should be in by Friday. So if anyone's looking for a report, we don't have it for that day. And that's about it, my three issues.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Our next regular scheduled meeting will be Monday, August 19th, 2013, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.